Dan Issa Lufleib, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and welcome. First on the agenda tonight, we have good news and recognition from Millstream Elementary School, 4th grade. We will turn that over to the senior.
So I'm actually going to bring up my 4th grade team of teachers, as well as four of our 4th graders who are going to share about their main day projects with you. So we have Mrs. Dorr, we have Mrs. Skillings, we have Mrs. Lehman, and we have Tessa. We have Charlotte, we have Ari, and we have Sevea with us. So they, I will turn things right over to Mrs. Lehman.
Hi. Well, these are, this is part of our Maine unit that we do every single year. We've been doing this for a while. And these strange-looking things that you see here are parade floats. And each year, the students choose a topic about Maine, and they write a research report, they develop a tri-fold poster, and they create these awesome parade floats. These are just a sample of what we actually did. So they're using what they've learned, they find out more about something, they use what they know to create a three-dimensional replica of their project. And hey, we'd just like to thank you for the great turnout tonight. You guys get your enthusiasm here. So what we like to do with our floats, uh, y'all want to add anything to? Sorry, I have a second, we got over talking situation. So, we're gonna parade our floats around. All the kids in 4th grade at Millstream get a float. So you can imagine, we have, how many kids do we have?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight? Forty-eight kids. So we had them filling our gym, our gymnasium, and it was awesome. Really awesome to look at. Parents came in, they asked a lot of hard-to-answer questions, and the kids were prepared with a speech, and so it was, it's just a lot of fun. The kids now come into 4th grade with their topic in mind that they want to do. They'll come up to us the first day of school, won't they? They say, "I'm gonna do honeybees," or something like that, for Maine. So let's start the parade. Uh, Sevea, you wanna start us? Because yours is right here in the front. None of them left to motorize. Alright, so we just pull them around, and you're gonna go right around the perimeter of the inside here. And this is Ari. Ari did strawberries. Uh, yes, and he has dried strawberries there for you to taste. He tried, he did honeybees. And Tessa did. And we have the trifles to show you, too. And they built their, while they're doing this, they built their, um, their float on any wheeled conveyance. So we had some kids with, that built their entire float on a skateboard. Really cool. So you think it couldn't be done, but it is done. They did a great job with it. Some use a chair. Lots of creativity. And their parents like to help them with their floats, too, so it's fun for the parents to get involved. Yeah, we had a tasting session here. Any questions from anybody? Thank you. Well, uh, they do the floats at home with their parents. These are the, the report we work on for a period of weeks, developing the topic, and, and that's one of the ways we incorporate writing into social studies, you see. And then the posters we do at school, and those take three or four days to do. A lot of them, we have a good time with it. Very nice. Thank you.
Good job, kids.
Thank you.
Also, anyone with strawberries over here? They taste better than...
Oh, they're yummy.
Very good. Like dried strawberry.
Sights fine on the warm summer day.
You're welcome to fill in the chairs they already left. Okay, now I'm looking to have a motion of the end of the minutes of 11:15, 2018, into the record. Teresa, seconded by Jeanne Franklin. All those in favor? All those opposed? Are there any extensions? Okay, so communications.
I have one resignation. Val Kelly, who's been a long time transportation person. She's leaving us. Got a couple of letters. Today, we received a letter from, we both have it, we can pack it, a letter from the Office of Governor-elect, from Janet Mills, expressing, wishing us well, and just hoping that we could board well over time. Give serious consideration to the issue that these folks here brought tonight. You'll copy that. We also have this press about the ACLU, putting a letter. Uh, we have not received that officially, unless there's been a press launch or online and found it and downloaded it. That's why it just gave you the information even though we haven't particularly received it in the office yet. So again, I'm trying to make sure the board has all the information that is out there in the air. That's all I have.
Other than school personnel who wish to speak tonight? Seeing none. Before I open the floor up to the public, I'd just like to make a comment to...
We can't hear you. Ari, we cannot hear you at all.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna limit, I have a list of people who have said to me tonight that they would like to speak. I'm gonna limit everybody to two minutes, but I'm also making a recommendation to the board tonight. I want everybody to know that before we listen to the people that we're gonna have, hold an open forum in January. Tonight, the board will set the date for that. Um, it should probably be around the 8th of the ninth, if I can understand.
Louder.
We're going to have it, I'm making a recommendation to the board tonight that we have an open forum around January 8th or 9th, the first couple, within the first couple of weeks of January, to open the floor up and have an open forum where everybody can come and speak to the board on either side. And with that said, the first person... The first person on my list to speak tonight, just because I saw her first, Judy Or.
When I think of the name Skowhegan Indians, I think of pride, honor, and a great love for my community where I was born. I wish I had Indian blood. I searched my genealogy for it, so far, nothing. I still am searching my husband's genealogy. Our town name is an Indian word. Do we have to change that? Our town logo brand is an Indian fishing. A person fishing should not be an offense. Do we have to change that? Our town even commissioned a famous artist to build a sculpture to honor our heritage. Shall we burn that down? Our heritage is in this town, is based on respect for the people who lived here before. Do we obliterate all reference and acknowledgement of the people who lived here before this? When countries, excuse me, take over another country, they try to wipe out the original culture. Hundreds of years ago, that is what was tried here. It didn't work, thankfully. We have done what we were asked to do a few years ago. We've introduced education back into our schools. There is no mascot anymore. It is a word, a name, that represents our community. Do we change all the Indian words in our town, state, and country? Do we obliterate all references and acknowledgement of the people who lived here first? We do take pride and honor in our heritage in this town. We do not want to forget the people who lived here before. We cannot change history, but we can honor the people who were here first. Thank you.
Cheryl Mary?
I just want to tell you that I went to high school in Skowhegan, and I went to all the teams' games and football games and basketball games when my daughter was in high school. And I just think that, a pride thing. I'm very proud to be a Skowhegan Indian, just like what she said. I mean, I do have Indian blood, I'm part Indian. My ancestors were from the Abenaki tribe. And my town, and I live in Norridge Walk, that's an Indian name. I just, you know, I just don't think it's fair to be asked to take our Indian away.
David Rice?
Hello. I think you guys recognize me from about three years ago. I stand up here for the same reason why I did three years ago. I was a Skowhegan area high school graduate, and I went to the Skowhegan area middle school. I think the, the, there is no mascot anymore. There hasn't been for years. We've, we've probably pretty much taken everything out that you guys asked us three years ago. And we added a bunch of things to the educational system that personally, myself, have went through. And you guys asking us more and more and more, it's, it's not, it's not good for the community. By taking the Skowhegan Indian logo and taking it away from the Skowhegan area is basically ripping the heritage away from the people that lived here and what has happened in the past. I think with the teachers, they have, with the Skowhegan, uh, Skowhegan, like, they've taken pride from the Skowhegan high school and put it into me. Personally, myself, I have a learning disability, and I didn't think I was gonna make it through high school. But with the teachers, with the Skowhegan Indian pride they put into me. I graduated. I did two years with the Call of the Arts program here, and then I went to Job Corps and got a Call of the Arts certificate. Then after that, I believed in myself because of the Skowhegan pride. After that, I went to the Bar Harbor Inn, and I worked there for a couple of seasons. I think it's gonna be a mistake by taking the name away and switching everything around. Thank you.
Okay, Nicole Carter?
Hi. Um, I am a lifetime resident of Skowhegan. My children are in school here and play sports. The Skowhegan Indian name was never brought up or disrespected in any way, but I have been disrespected and called bad mom and that I was abusing my children because it was my daughter that was in the paper holding the sign a few years ago. I understand from friends who are native that the words pride and heritage, it bothers them. They said if we want the name, we should just state that. It's a name, and that's it, instead of trying to pretend to be something, you know, that we are not. Um, we want to keep it because it's freedom of speech. We want the name, plain and simple. Um, I turned in, three years ago or four years ago, when we visited this, thirty-five hundred signatures from more than half of the town to keep the name. I had petitions everywhere, online and in stores in our neighborhoods. Um, and these were local people. I only accepted signatures with resident, with addresses from people that were from here. The vote last time needs to be held. Unfortunately, with the voting process, the results need to be respected. We don't just do it until we get what we want. One side has to lose, and we had, if we had lost, I wouldn't be able to come here three years later and ask you to change it back to the Indians. It would look foolish. So I think we should just respect our process and leave it. Thank you.
Now, Mark Roman?
Mark Roman. He's coming.
Hello, my name is Mark Roman. I'm from Solon. As recently as the 1970s, Indian children were being separated from their families by state agencies in Maine. They were being told not to speak their language, not to honor their custom. And despite this, I look around and I know native indigenous people who are still very strong with their own culture. And it seems amazingly unfair that a sports team wants to call itself the Indians when the Indians themselves were told not to call themselves that. That's all I have to say.
Next on my list is Muyan Dana. Muyan Dana.
Hello. Uh, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I know that this is a bit bigger crowd than most of your meetings, and I'm very, very thankful for that. I am happy for the support we have here in the town for the effort to remove the Indian mascot. I'm also, I want to commend these folks that spoke in favor of keeping it. I know better than most people the amount of bravery it takes to stand up for what you believe in. I know that there's a lot of pride in this town, and I know that once the mascots change, you'll still have that pride, you'll still have each other. I want to thank you for taking our request seriously that I presented a couple of meetings ago. It was a request on behalf of the Penauksot Nation. I am the first ever appointed ambassador of the Penauksot Nation, and it is, apart from being a mother, the highest honor of my life. The fact that I get to come here and do this terrifies me, but is such a blessing. I've been public speaking since I was fifteen years old. I have testified in front of congressional committees. This is the hardest room I ever step into. Some of you people absolutely terrify me. Sometimes I'm afraid for my safety when I come here. In the years since 2015, Skowhegan Indian pride has threatened to rape me, they have threatened my life, and still I come here wanting to seek common ground with you. I want to recognize some tribal leaders in the room. We have former chief of the Penauksot Nation, Barry Dana. We have the Pasmaquadi representative to the legislature, Rena Newell. We have vice chief of the Arustic Band of Mick-Maxx, Richard Sillyboy. I believe you have a letter from the Malasie chief, Clarissa Sabadis. We are all united, and we all support this effort to remove the mascot for Abenaki people. I want to thank Governor-elect Janet Mills for urging you to remove the mascot and the letter that she sent to you today. I also want to recognize some people in the room up in the corner. Uh, council member Kyle Lohler of Penauksot Nation, and Sage Lynn? Person. Uh, they have coordinated the Penauksot Nation Youth Council to come here tonight. And it does my heart so good because I was their age when I got into this work, and it was because of Skowhegan Indians and the way I saw my culture being mocked and degraded. This is pride. This is sacred. This is not for you to win basketball games. So in the years since I was their age, I've kept up this work, and I know a lot of you know me. I've been here many, many times. And tonight, I am so thankful for all of this support. There are some people that have been in here with us since the beginning. There are a lot of new faces. And I want to talk about a couple of things before I make a simple request of you. And I want to talk about the name Skowhegan. I want to talk about the statue. Those things aren't using our race as a mascot. Those things are not dehumanizing us. There was native heritage in this town, and that's where the name comes from. An appropriate way to honor the heritage is to change the mascot. I want to talk about this group of young people here tonight. They came in a little late, so didn't make the speakers list, but I really think you need to hear from them. And if I have any time left over, I would like to cede that time to them because these are the kids that are the peers to the students in your high school. And anybody supporting this mascot and actively promoting it on social media is negligent in their duties as a school board member. And they are harming the educational environment of the children in the school. So I would very much like to introduce these young people. I don't know if they have one spokesperson or what they have planned, but I would really, really like you to hear from them.
Um, Skyler Louis, I'm a sophomore. Uh, this is Gabby Ricker, she's a senior.
Um, my name's Fade Francis. I'm a student athlete at Handen Academy.
I'm Gray Brown, I'm a senior at Old Town High School.
I'm Ellis Nockvason, I'm a senior student athlete at Orno High School.
I'm Jane Love, I'm a student athlete at Orno High School.
I'm Alana Chauverie, I'm a senior at Old Town High School.
I attended Old Town, I attend Old Town High School, who were once the Old Town Indians, and now they're the Old Town Coyotes. Um, their mascot was changed due to that, and I feel as a Skowhegan should be doing the same. We all grew up on the reservation on Indian Island. We know what racism is like. We know that, although you guys do say you celebrate the heritage and the culture, but you don't, you don't celebrate it. You don't have socials, you don't have ceremonies. You don't, you don't do those types, type of things for, as of what we're doing. We're here today to support Muyan in the, um, in the support of banning the Skowhegan mascot. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for making the trip. Do any, do the guys want to speak?
Um, I just want to say you guys should, like, ban it because, um, that, the word Indians was used as sort of like a derogatory slang. So having that as like your mascot name is like, we were like killed off, like, many of us, like millions of us. So having that, and we're called Indians, so having us as like a logo kind of like still has like a bad, like vibe to it, so.
Um, I also want to add that, um, a friend of mine said that you guys are only Indians for four years and we're Indians for life. Take that into consideration.
Uh, Skyler Louis, she'll be taking my place as soon as she's old enough. Uh, thank you so much again. Uh, in closing, I would just like to say, um, these Indian mascots perpetuate harmful stereotypes about our people. You see me wearing a pin, and you see us wearing red. This symbolizes that we are honoring the murdered and missing indigenous women. One in three indigenous women will go missing or fall victim to rape or be murdered in her life, and the statistics are grossly underreported, the cases are rarely solved. I myself have two daughters, so this means a lot to me. When you see us as less than people, we become disposable. We become objects, and that is not okay. And you may know, you may know people who claim to have Indian blood, and they may be completely okay with this. It doesn't mean it's okay. There are people that are okay with very awful gruesome things. It doesn't make it okay in a moral sense. Your research and facts and scientific findings that I've shared with you all before that support that these mascots do indeed cause harm, and by knowingly perpetuating them, you are causing harm. Thank you.
We have one more speaker, I think. Nicole... Nicole...
LaChapelle.
Sorry.
Um, I had a letter, but I have two minutes. We'll see if I can do this. Uh, "Why take away the remembrance of who makes up the very foundation of this great land we know as these United States, this territory known as Maine? Why strip those that are left, many of which carry traces and blood quantum of their native ancestors, of the very heartbeat of the drum that still lingers inside? When I hear the word Indian, I don't sit here and remind myself that it technically is an inaccurate term, that, that a foreigner would actually think is of India, East Indians. No, when I hear the word Indian, I am reminded of my family, of my roots, of what my recent ancestors quietly endured, stripped of a name, stripped of a people, stripped of a language, stripped of a home, stripped of dignity, instead reaping poverty and oppression. I definitely honor my Native American brothers and sisters. I am part Mohawk of the Iroquois Nation, and I'm not full-blooded because my family is mixed. My aunt here in Athens had a powwow from 1992 to 2003, and it was an intra-travel gathering. I think that this is a great opportunity to embrace what we have left of our Indian roots. I know of the six to eight thousand in this town, the population, that there is so many, and I've spoken with many of them recently, that still have their Native American ancestry, and, and they want to embrace it. They feel this pride that we're still recognized. When I see the name, I feel a kinship with it. I feel home. My ancestors, so my aunts and uncles, they were immigrated from Canada in 1940. I'm from the Oka Reservation, Kennesaw-Taki, um, near Montreal, Canada, originally. My aunts and uncles, when they were in school, the schoolteachers would call them savages, which is a French word meaning savage. And it's not that cool fierce term that we need nowadays. It means disgusting and, and worth nothing, and worth less than. Those schoolteachers never would have wanted their school labeled Indian. They would have quit the school. They would have wanted nothing to do with it. Yet here we are, this opportunity, the last school standing. Why wouldn't we want to embrace it? And use it as an opportunity to have workshops in the school? Use it as an opportunity to have conversation and dialogue about what we all have gone through? We would love to hear your story. Have people come in and do these sorts of things to teach the kids that are here for four years. But those kids that have been here for four years or are going to be here for four years, so many of them have a blood quantum within them.
Pack this up, I'm sorry.
I have one quick thing to say.
I have another lady, I believe, who has something to say other than about Indian, like, name.
I just wanted to make sure that it gets on the agenda for next meeting, or that there's policies in place or whatever, that we get notified about threats to our school before the first child gets on the bus. Because, um, I want to make that decision. I want to hug my child one more time, I want to give him a spiel, and send him out the door to school like he should be. But I want to know. So if we can make that happen, that would be great.
Efforts are being made, it's going to be turned over to the, to the policy programs.
And, and if we can hear about how that policy goes about, that would be great. And, and if we can hear about how that policy goes about, that would be great.
Again, I'm gonna reiterate that I am making a recommendation to the board tonight to have an open forum within the first couple of weeks of January. What's that? And, um, so.
It's gonna be the first week?
Well, within the first couple of weeks.
We talked about either the January eighth or ninth. Those dates are available.
No, I don't. I have, that's. Oh, I'm sorry. Sue Ponkrin. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I jumped right over you.
I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna make a big deal of this. I thought I could do this next time, but I, I really honor the fact that you guys are opening this up to everybody in January. Gives us time to really think about it and work together on this problem. I am a, I've lived in Skowhegan for thirty-six years, and I'm a former school board member for about eighteen of those thirty-six years. And it's obvious to me that everyone here is coming from a place of pride in and love for this community and respect for the history and the heritage of the people who were here first. The problem is that a large number of those first people, not everybody, but a large number of the first people living in our state and experience our representation of that respect as profoundly demeaning and disrespectful. Can you hear me? Could you hear me when I say anything? All of us here were initially immigrants to this country and this town and we, this country and this town, and we were initially welcomed and helped by the native peoples and in certain places would not have survived without them. They taught us a lot, and despite the ups and downs of this fraught relationship over the intervening centuries, they still have a lot to teach us. They carry the inherited historical trauma of a bloody massacre in our own backyard, which will not be forgotten by them and should not be forgotten by us. Their people certainly played an active role in the French and Indian War, and killing went both ways, but the land grab that led to the Nor'jwok massacre in seventeen twenty-four was brutal. We are not responsible for that time, but it's important to understand that this group of people have lost much over the last two centuries and have had to survive all sorts of aggression from what has become the dominant culture. Our use of their image and name for our mascot, which to them is demeaning, is also what I consider as taking from them yet again and another microaggression, and they have sustained so many of these over the years. And for that reason only, I support trying to meet them with this demand and getting, moving on from that mascot. And the only, I would suggest a separate group, and that's great, that we're gonna do that.
What, what, what would the board like to do with this? Would you like to do the open forum in January? What would you?
I'd like to make a motion right now that we allow our selectman, Ms. Vanessa York, to speak.
For your order. I mean, appreciate it. I really do.
Is she on the list?
She's on on White Woods. What's that? She had asked to speak, but.
I think if the rules were, we're gonna try to sign up and do that, and that's the only thing I have, opportunity to speak. If we might.
Okay. Yep. So I think what I'm looking for right now is to what the board would like to do. Would you like to have a, have a hold the forum in January? Where we can listen to.
I, I move that we have a forum in January, either the eighth or the ninth of January in the evening.
I second. Wait, wait, wait. It's a motion again. Can we do a motion again? Can it just be a recommendation?
I, I think you could do it by consensus as a group.
I would think consensus would be better than a motion taken out of, out of context and context and off the agenda. Sorry. I mean.
You certainly could do it by consensus.
I would like a roll call on that for the record as well, please.
So you're gonna take, are we gonna raise our hands or?
We could do it by show of hands, without, without a motion. She's saying she doesn't want a motion. So we, so you certainly could decide who's saying, who supports something and who does not. You okay with that, Ellen?
I'm okay with that.
It's an indication, an indication, yes. Yeah, ma'am.
Yes, yes.
No, I think, I think we're just saying who would, yeah, who would, who would support having a, the meeting and who would not.
So you wanna show of hands? Can I have a show of hands of people that would like to have a forum in January?
You come on. If you mind, this is only to give, give anybody an opportunity to speak, to expand tonight's opportunity. That's all it is.
Yeah, but there'll be an all decision made.
No decision, no, no, no decision, no vote. Just, just, uh, just an opportunity to, just listen to more comment. We have the tally. We're, we're waiting, go, go, sweetie.
About anybody that does not wanna open this, that, to an open forum, raise your hand.
Okay. Okay, just the envision of this would be just to have an opportunity for people to sign in, have an opportunity to go on a list, alternate speakers, so the board will have an opportunity to hear as many people as want to speak. Not make any decisions. No, we're talking, I believe that, that we're just getting people from whoever.
No, you can bust people in. I mean, our town can be flooded with people. I mean, most of the people that spoke here tonight are not from this town, and they get recognized as if they are. And I don't think that's fair to our town who vote and pay our tax.
If somebody with a loud voice say what they're saying. I can't hear anything.
Just double check.
I wanna also say that that night is just for this kind of thing. There will be no vote that night.
Can we have it in a bigger space?
We will have it in a bigger space. Yes, ma'am. We'll have it written in the gymnasium, right here.
How early do you have to sign up?
I'll be there for signups an hour before.
The yeas have it, yes, the yeses have it.
The yeses have it. Maggie, no questions?
I wanted to know if we will have an opportunity to, to talk about that meeting, either personnel or, or, just because my question, last time, um, we had a two-minute, um, thing. I would like to suggest we have a two-minute thing with a fifteen or thirty-second. It's also hard to stop. We, we don't work out those, that's what I was asking. We're gonna work out the.
And the idea is to be fair to people, so you, you get good information, so you can make whatever decision you wanna make, whether it's to do anything or not to do anything. It's all your call.
What, what did you, the recommend, yes?
To, uh, avoid a flood of inquiries to you guys' office, we should probably set up a time to decide.
I'm doing that next. The recommendation was for the eighth or the ninth because the gymnasium is free. That's a Tuesday or a Wednesday night. Um, I would recommend what?
Just start at six.
I'd like to recommend that we start at six, just so that we don't. So what works best for the board? Tuesday or Wednesday? Tuesday works best because of work, but Tuesday. So it is January eighth, two thousand nineteen, six o'clock at the middle school gymnasium. January eighth, two thousand nineteen, sixteen.
Will there be a mic?
Yes, ma'am.